... session of the county of Cochise and state of Arizona. Now, on Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall, I'm sorry, via Zoom. Ms. Cornado, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacaminho.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Jesus Harrow, public works director, George Castillo, fire chief, James Ledbetter, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our motive silence tonight, I want to bring up a... Unfortunately, we lost another Bisbee resident to a traffic accident a couple days ago on the other side of the tunnel, Highway 80, obviously, again. I heard that there was another one today on the way to Douglas, but I don't have any information to know if that's true or not. But if we take a... Just take a moment and think of those and their families that we've recently lost on Highway 80 and think about us all driving more carefully. Thank you. I'll move on to proclamations announcements. We don't have any proclamations. The announcement I want to make is that APS has put out a bulletin a couple hours ago. I put it on Facebook, but it's asking for us to conserve electricity, that the heat is so extreme in the southwest that they have reached peak electrical usage that they've never reached before, that they're setting records. And they're asking if we would please attempt to cut down between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00. This would include things like clothes dryers and washing machines, pool pumps, things that take a lot of electricity. And if we would turn our thermostats up, if possible, to about 80 degrees to save as much, conserve as much electricity as possible. So with that, I will move on to, do we have any call of the public?
Yes, sir. We have three.
All right. Ms. Landers, would you please read them?
From Donna Pulling. This is in regards to accounts payable, IT services, $4,090. What was this charge for? This is not for equipment. Why are we paying double for additional time? Last year, Executec, a Utah company, was over budget by approximately 100% at $96,000 for the year. The yearly service contract with Executec is for $50,000. That includes only a limited number of hours per month. Last year, Executec charged an additional $50,000. In July, the first month of this new fiscal year, Executec has already charged an additional $4,090 for professional services beyond the $5,390 monthly contract fee. The contract for IT services should reflect the actual cost of IT service for budgeting purposes, not some low-ball figure that ends up costing 100% more in charges each year. At the end of this contract, it might be time for the city to go out to bid for a new IT service provider, a real, live, local person as a part-time employee at half the cost. And item number four, sustainability plan. Congratulations to this sustainability committee for developing this very thorough plan. It reflects the community desires for sustainability in present and future decisions. This plan took years of time and effort to develop. I hope it will be utilized and not just put on a shelf for posterity. I'd like to recommend that the council direct the city manager to develop a triple bottom line checklist for commissions and council to use that rates social, environmental, and financial impacts of any decision. Many businesses and cities utilize this method when considering any decision. I've witnessed it used by the City Council of San Luis Obispo, California, when evaluating city contracts and is used in many other cities. Again, congratulations and thank you to the sustainability committee for their service to the community. And one more from Donna Pulling. Council members, this is regarding item number five. The ambulance subscription program is a good idea, but the city is moving too quickly on it without providing council and the public with sufficient information to make an informed decision. The price looks good at $45.75, but what are the true long-term costs? One, to city finance staff responsible for collecting the subscription fee and explaining the program to the subscribers. And two, to the taxpayers through increased rates from the collection company for extra work collecting subscription versus non-subscription amounts. I agree with Ken Budget's analysis of the potential pitfalls. There are too many unanswered questions on this program, and I encourage you to table this item until there is sufficient information to analyze the long-term costs to staff and taxpayers and establish a rate that realistically covers the city ambulance services provided to subscribers. Thank you, Donna Pulling. And from Allison Williams. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Coleman, City Staff, Members of the Public. I wanted to update you on a few things happening at the Copper Queen Library as we respond to COVID-19 and work hard to reach our community. The Copper Queen Library's summer reading program was a terrific success. Despite not being able to be with our kids in person, we also created a new summer reading program this year in response to the recent births of so many babies here in Bisbee and have included 0- to 24-month-olds in the new Bisbee Summer Reading Program, excuse me, Biz Baby Summer Reading Program, with 17 new participants at this age range. We had over 80 participants total and sent out over 700 packages throughout the summer via USPS, each with an age-appropriate free book for their home libraries, as well as unique activity booklets and crafts that we made. Special thanks to Freeport-Mack Moran and the best friends of the Copper Queen Library for supporting this program. Curbside pickup has been a great success, with 2,000 items picked up in July alone. And we have expanded our curbside service to the Copper Queen Library Annex to Fridays, 12:00 to 5:00 PM. The main library hours are 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Our programming has gone virtual, with adult programming, our City Manager Office Hour, thank you, the Poetry Critique Society, and children and caregiver programming starting this month. There are two sign-ups for virtual programming on our website, one for adult programs and one for children/caregivers. You only have to sign up once to then receive links to all the programs. We have a special message to students, parents, and teachers. We are here for you. We know your first day of school was different, but we are available to help with resources, programming, and library by appointment for teachers and educators. Please reach out to us if there is something you need or something you want us to find or create. We miss you, but please know that we are working hard to support you in all your endeavors. Thank you for sending feedback on the summer reading program packages. It was much appreciated. Allison Williams, program coordinator. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Landers. Appreciate it. Moving on to accounts payable. Do we have a motion to pay accounts payable?
I move to pay accounts payable in the amount of $196,299.05.
Thank you. I'll second that. Questions?
I've got one.
Yes, Ms. Klein?
On page three on the gasoline purchases, we've got one for Nash and in the amount of 461 and some change. And for Brennan, 466 and some change. Are these the two officers that are taking their units out of town?
I cannot answer that, but actually, if you look at that entire list, there are also other officers who, if you add up the vehicles they were in, also add up, you know, two hundreds of dollars. So what this really... It's not really telling us anything, except for that we've had to use multiple vehicles in order to keep the department viable. It doesn't tell us where they're going. It tells us which vehicles. No, it only tells us who... But the... This report tells us who put gas into vehicles. We would have to go back to the fleet management report to see which vehicles they were putting gas in.
Okay.
Gets us their PIN number, right.
Okay, yeah, I was just initially looking at them, and those two were much higher than the other ones. That's... That was the only reason I questioned that.
Yeah, but you could... I think I saw there's a couple folks, if you added their two or three together, like, talks comes to 350, but then I also can't tell you how many shifts he worked during the period. Like, it doesn't tell us what shifts they worked. All it tells us is whose PIN number was used when gas was put in a vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Consent agenda. Item A, approval of the resignation of Albert Hopper from the Appeals Board for the Property Maintenance Code. Do we have any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the resignation of Albert Hopper from the Appeals Board for the Property Maintenance Code.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Cornado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, discussion of possible approval to enter into a contract with K E and G Construction, Inc. to apply an asphalt overlay to Tombstone Canyon. Mr. Harrow?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I need to apologize. I did present this previously. And I... Everything I spoke to previously is the same. I only mistakenly presented the proposal from K E and G without the thermoplastic pavement markings. This one includes thermoplastic pavement markings, and I did mention that in my presentation previously. The difference in that is $35,823. I was always... My intention to present that to you all. And I always... This includes... The original discussion I had always included the... A 20% contingency, which would have covered that, but I would still like to cover that with a 20% contingency. Is not anything that K E and G did. It's all my mistake, and I apologize. So there... It would... We are all on target to move forward with this project, if you all would like.
Mr. Harrow, is this on Labor Day, that area?
Yes, sir. The... The timing for this is to start the week of Labor Day. So after the Monday, we're all off. We... That is the plan.
Great. Questions?
I have a question.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Harrow, I sent you an email. I don't think... I haven't seen a response yet, so I'm going to ask the question now. About six or eight months ago, refresh my memory, there is some very serious damage to the asphalt from the Naco Highway exit to Rory Gulch. And I'm concerned that... Well, let me backtrack. Did you not say six months ago that there was going to be some extra work to that section of pavement under this contract?
Yes, that area is planned on having a mill. So we will... We will remove portions of that. That is a portion of that. We spoke previously that we may actually do a portion of that, but this is covered under that contract.
Thank you.
Any... Anyone else?
I've got a question.
Yes, Ms. Klein. Ms. Klein?
Okay. Mr. Harrow, so this is... This is our first change order. Do you see any other change orders coming down the pike?
Again, Ms. Klein, I apologize. This is not a change order. This is something that I had previously negotiated. I had three proposals from K E and G. The first one was without pavement markings and without traffic control. The second one included that, and when they proposed that second proposal, it did not include thermoplastic pavement markings. And so then I requested a thermoplastic, and so this is their final proposal. This is not a change order. This is a mistake on my part, and I apologize. I presented the second proposal that they gave us, and I've always intended to present to you all a thermoplastic pavement markings. This will... The pavement markings should last about five years. It's a much better application for pavement markings. And again, I apologize. It's my fault.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the contract with K E.
I have a question.
Who? Somebody. I don't know who has... Who wants the question? Oh.
Oh, I said I had a question, but Bill was already making a...
Go ahead, go ahead. The motion's... Go ahead.
Okay, um, no, I just wondered, is there any chance of getting any speed bumps on Tombstone Canyon as we are doing this? Because I live now right between the Ironman and Circle K, and it's 15 right here, but everybody seems to get to the Ironman and just gun it to go up the canyon. And so I at least wanted to bring that up.
I would be more than happy to discuss the possibility of speed cushions in that area. Speed cushions are a very specific application. This area may have the opportunity for those, because in order to have speed cushions, you have to have a vertical curb on both sides to avoid the possibility of driving around them. This does not include that, but that is something that we can definitely have a discussion about and look into.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie, I just want to add that we've also had conversations with the police chief about using the new striping to do some traffic calming. So exaggerating curves will slow down traffic, indicating that there's more parking spaces available, and having more cars parked will slow down traffic. So we're definitely keeping that in mind as the project moves forward and planning to calm traffic as much as we can.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I do know that, you know, previously, we have kind of discussed, well, it's come up several times, Tombstone Canyon in Maine. And there were some issues about the rain runoff and flooding adjacent properties. So I guess it... That's out of my area of expertise. I'm just bringing that up. It's... Apparently, that's a consideration, depending on exactly where it is. But Mr. Harrow, I guess we'll address that and take a look at it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion, Mr. Higgins?
I move to approve the contract with K E and G Construction, Inc. to apply an asphalt overlay to Tombstone Canyon.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Cornado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion of possible approval of a notion of intent to adopt ordinance O-20-13, dissolving the Community Sustainability Commission. I asked this to be placed on here. The fact is that the commission has done a great job and has fulfilled their mission, which was to provide a written sustainability proposal and guide to work off of. They had done that. And then past that, we have a... They're kind of a ship without a purpose. And they are meeting, but in three years, they've only been able to meet four times because of lack of quorum and so forth. So my discussions with the chair and have indicated his agreement that they believe that they fulfilled their mission, and it's time to move on. So I did want to thank them very much for the hard work that they did put in on this. And the report is available to the public. I believe it's on our website, and I hope that it is pulled out and looked at. And discussion.
I just have a comment, Mayor. I was the liaison to that committee for a while. It's been probably about two years. And during that time was when they completed it. And I just want to thank them very much for their diligence, their hard work in putting together a really solid sustainability plan.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 0-20-13, dissolving the Community Sustainability Commission.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Cornado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And again, with my thanks. Item five, discussion of possible approval of a resolution R-20-22, ambulance subscription rates and providing for repeal and severability. Ms. Carrie Bagley, Finance Director. Can you hear me, Carrie Bagley?
Yes.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
You can hear me now? Okay, I had to press the button.
What kind of a plane are you flying?
Yeah, you know, the... The mic doesn't work good on this laptop, so...
Well, I appreciate that.
So this is just the rates for the proposed rates for the ambulance subscription program. $45 for a family of two, $75 for a family of three, and then three different tiers of business plans. You know, these aren't set in stone. It's kind of, you know, we need to try this and see how it works and how the rates work. So this is just the initial try it. What kind of rates will work?
Okay. I've noticed, and I have voiced it, so it's not a surprise that they're... It seemed to be very low, particularly if we compare them to rate... Other rates of similar services in Arizona. But I am in agreement that this is a way to get this operational and that perhaps we can see how it goes, and then those rates can be adjusted, you know, down the road in the future. So what kind of questions do we have, council?
I have one.
Yes, Ms. Giacaminho.
So based on, I guess, state statute, the certificate holder applying to provide a subscription service is supposed to have done a few things before even considering. They are supposed to estimate the subscription service contracts and document it with supporting evidence. They're supposed to give an estimate of numbers of annual subscriptions and transport for the service area, the purpose for the subscription, the estimated cost, and it goes on and on. It's R-925-1105. Have we done that?
So the Arizona Department of Health Services, they regulate the rates that are set for ambulance service. We're not changing the rates that are being charged. The customers are still going to be charged the same rates. All this is doing is changing how much we collect. And I'm not sure that AZDHS is concerned with how much we collect on our end. Basically, like when we signed up for service or billing service with AMB, they asked us whether or not we wanted to collect the amount that the insurance didn't cover from the customers. And it's up to want to collect the full amount, if we want to accept a partial amount. So this is basically the same thing, and AZDHS doesn't regulate that. I did send an email to my contact at the Department of Health Services, and she honestly didn't know offhand. She was going to have to get back to me on that, on whether or not we needed to file all that paperwork.
Yeah, I'm reading straight from the Arizona State Statute.
Like I said, that was regarding... That was regarding the rates that are charged.
It says provision of subscription service or establish a subscription service.
Right. So Joni, we already have an ambulance service through our fire department, so we're not creating a new service. We're creating a new way to make the payments for the services that we do provide.
Well, the thing is that specifically state subscription, I don't know.
Right, and we're a city-provided service, so we're not a subscription service.
But are we not providing a subscription now?
We're providing folks with an alternative way to pay the difference or the cost of their emergency transport. We're not creating another service. We already have...
For a yearly fee, that's a subscription, is it not?
No. Well, this is only a way to pay, folks. So for example, if I choose not to pay, I... An ambulance will still come to my home because the service is a city-provided ambulance service. And for a subscription service is saying, if you want an ambulance to respond to you, you need to be a subscriber. That's not this case.
So are you going... Are you going to require them to have insurance? Or are they going to be able to get this $45 a year?
No, actually, actually, the folks who... Actually, actually, the folks who, who have the most difficulty meeting their obligations are those that don't have insurance. So this gives them a way to pay forty-five dollars a year instead of trying to figure out like how to get ten dollar payment in every once in a while, every time the credit company calls them. Sure.
Mr. Ledbetter, do you, do you have something to add to that?
And Councilmember Giacomoino raises a good point. She's reading from the regulations under Title thirty-six. But what the city manager's indicating is also accurate, that DHS indicates that for private ambulance subscription services, they do have a right to regulate those. There's not any evidence of the attempt to regulate for a city service, both under the regulations and under the statutes. So what the city manager's indicating is accurate. And but the follow-up with DHS is appropriate, as Councilmember Giacomoino was suggesting, and Ms. Bagley is taking care of that.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Mr. Pollock?
Never mind.
This is for Ms. Coleman. Do you have an existing plan written on how this will be administered? This program will be administered?
The, so the individual to pay, there, it's very simple. So folks have an opportunity to pay forty-five dollars a year. That will be handled. We already provide payment services at City Hall, so we'll handle those payments. When there's a balance due or an emergency call and the individual indicates to us that they have a paid subscription, then we will let the building company know that we will not be collecting the additional fees through them or a collection agency. It's that straightforward.
So you're saying that the plan will be administered by the existing infrastructure that you have set up to collect debts? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And I have two more questions. Any subscription fees that are collected, are those fees fenced? And if not, what happens to the excess revenue if there is any?
It actually will become a revenue to offset the cost of providing the service. So it will show, probably not the same line. That's a good question for Carrie. She will separate the two, but it will help us show how we're offsetting the cost of providing the service.
Thank you. And as far as uninsured people are concerned?
Yep.
Have you considered the impact this would have on Medicaid recipients?
I'll let Carrie answer that. I think she did have that discussion.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question about uninsured and those on Medicaid.
Medicaid recipients cannot be charged for any fees over and above what Medicaid pays. So there, there's some shady legal question there. If you try to sell a subscription to a Medicaid recipient, there would be a legal issue there that would have to be addressed.
Oh, yeah. We're not selling subscriptions. It's totally, this is totally voluntary. So if that's their plan, they should not participate.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Giacomoino?
So your forty-two dollars, what did you base this on? Did you prepare?
You're muted.
You're muted.
So the forty-five dollars, did you compare this to other places around the state, similar size community? Considering the ranges are what, forty-five to a hundred dollars throughout the state?
Yeah. Actually, as the mayor stated, this is lower than what some other communities are charging. We don't have any idea what the, what the folks who aren't able to otherwise pay their bill can really afford on an annual basis. I mean, we may find out that forty-five dollars isn't an amount that they can, that they can get together, let alone sixty-five dollars or a hundred dollars. So as the mayor stated, this is a way to see if we're offering something that folks are able to participate in. Those folks who have the most difficulty paying are trying to pay us off ten dollars at a time. So we just need to see, is, is forty-five doable? And if it is, you know, then we can look at, okay, what could they actually pay if they didn't have to pay ten dollars a month or every time they got an extra ten dollars to try to pay off their bill?
And I have one last question. Kind of reflects back on what Lou just said as far as the Medicare. Are we not selling a subscription? Because that's what it's deemed as.
No, it's, it's, we're not selling this. It's totally an option. It offers people another way to pay for the difference between whatever coverage they have and the actual cost of the call.
So tell me how that's different from selling something. We're offering them something for sale?
Yeah, but they don't have to, like, we're not forcing them to participate. It's totally voluntary.
Right, but even if it's totally voluntary and they purchase it.
It's not like, like sewer and garbage, you have to pay it. There's no choice. This is totally voluntary.
I get that.
We're offering, we're offering it. We're not.
I understand that.
We're offering a program. We're offering the program. Yeah.
I understand that.
Can I, can I make a comment on, on that? I think what she's saying is that whether or not they get the subscription, they're still going to get an ambulance to come help them if they have an emergency. Whereas a subscription would be, as you're thinking of a subscription, you have to buy that subscription if you want the ambulance.
That's not what I'm thinking. What I'm saying is, in reference to what Lou was saying, if we have someone who's on Medicare and they purchase this voluntarily, is this going to be a violation because we are charging them over and above? That was what my question was.
Well, that's, that's a situation that they create by, by, by participating in the program.
And are we going to provide that information for them so they don't unknowingly purchase it?
We can certainly, so we can certainly ask them what coverage they have and counsel them.
And Councilmember Pollock, excuse me, was speaking as to access, which is Medicaid as opposed to Medicare.
I'm sorry.
And so, because the Medicare recipients could benefit from this because of their deductibles and co-pays.
My concern is just the legal quantum. If someone unwittingly purchases this, purchases this willingly and is charged, well, it comes back and reflects on us because we weren't supposed to charge them.
Yeah. Joanie, we can refund them if they, if they discover or we discover that it was an error. We can refund them.
I'm not worried about the refunding. I'm worried about getting tagged by a legal entity because we did something illegal.
Not intentionally.
Ignorance is not an excuse for breaking the law, though.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yes, I have one more question.
Ms. Johns?
Um, I just kind of wanted to know how it's going to work as far as when people are enrolling and when their coverage starts, like maybe an open enrollment period where, and then they're closed off from it from the rest of the year or, okay, I was just curious about.
Yeah, pretty much like the flight insurance I purchased. You know, I moved into my house in October. I got insurance on my home in October and they offered me flight insurance in October. I didn't have to wait.
Okay, so people will be able to buy this anytime? And so that means the list of who's covered is going to be changing frequently, probably? Okay.
Yeah. But it would just be like our business license list, or we handle things like this on a daily basis.
Okay.
Ms., oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Johns, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Ms. Klein?
Um, I do appreciate you trying to help, you know, our citizens with the ambulance, with their ambulance fees. I am concerned about the cost. If they don't have insurance and they just use this, are we not going to be losing more money in the long run? And then the second part is if city staff is going to be doing the billing for this, can they not do the regular ambulance billing like we used two years ago? Instead of outsourcing?
Ms. Bagley?
Well, we wouldn't really be doing the, the billing. I mean, there's a lot involved with the ambulance billing. This is really only collecting a fee and then reporting that to our ambulance billers so they can apply it to the patient's accounts. And what was, I don't remember the first half of the question.
It wasn't so much a question as it was a statement.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Who's, who said yes?
Lou. Lou.
Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, this, this thing is stated as a program for our fire department. City of Bisbee Fire Department.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll give you a hypothetical. Let's say that the BFD gets a call and they refuse the call and it goes to Arizona Ambulance. Would you, would the program cover that cost because Arizona Ambulance took the call?
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a question.
Yes, Ms. Hanson.
Okay, this is only for emergencies. It's not for transfers. So don't we do all the emergencies?
Chief?
Oh, yes, we do. We respond to all the emergencies within the city.
That wouldn't be a player then. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Chief.
Oh, yes, I was just telling you that we do respond to all emergencies within our CON from what the Department of Health Services issues us.
Right, we don't, we don't turn down those and give them to a private company is, is the answer, Chief. Or is that correct?
Correct.
Right. It's, the only time that Arizona Ambulance is involved is on inter-facility transports. Anybody else? I don't see it. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution R dash twenty dash twenty-two, ambulance subscription rates and providing for repeal and severability, severability, excuse me.
I'll second that. Ms. Cornato?
Mayor Pro Tim Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomoino?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five to two. Item number six, discussion of possible approval of the amendment to the employee agreement between the City of Bisbee and Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ms. Joel Landers, Personnel Director. Welcome back.
Thank you. So I have, in lieu of additional compensation, an amendment to the employment agreement with Teresa Coleman to include paid time off for vacation, holidays, and sick leave at the ten years or more rate for exempt employees of nine point five hours per pay period.
Yep. Bottom line is that Ms. Coleman did not ask for a raise nor issue kidding one. But I can attest to the fact that she works on weekends and on Fridays, which are her alleged day off continually because I'm with her on some of those times and, and multiple meetings, et cetera. And so this is simply a way of providing her some extra time off via vacation. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to employment agreement between the City of Bisbee and Teresa Coleman, City Manager.
I'll second that.
I beat you to it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Cornato?
Mayor Pro Tim Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomoino?
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
I did, I didn't, I didn't get the vote.
Councilmember Klein?
You're, you're muted, Miss Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five to two. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R twenty twenty-three, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August fourth, twenty twenty, and ordering the recordation of this resolution.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the resolution that would allow us to accept and approve the election results from the August fourth primary election. If approved tonight, it'll be recorded at the Cochise County Recorder's Office.
Any questions? I move to approve Resolution R twenty twenty-three, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August fourth, twenty twenty, and ordering the recordation of this resolution.
Second.
Ms. Cornato?
Mayor Pro Tim Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomoino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, discussion and possible approval of a notice of solicitation for professional consultant services shared use path feasibility study per USDA grant approval. Ms. Coleman?
Aye, thank you. So this was the USDA grant that was approved by the council a couple meetings ago, perhaps, and includes some in-kind work by a variety of organizations. We need to go out to find a consultant to actually prepare the feasibility study for us. And this RFP reflects the scope of work that the, that the feasibility study would include.
Questions?
I have many.
Sure.
My first question, I guess, is to, to Mr. Ledbetter. When you write an RFP, is that RFP pretty much held to the letter as to what it states?
There is flexibility, but generally speaking, yeah, you have to meet the terms of the RFP.
Okay, so with that said, my question starts with the way that it's written in describing a right-of-way. A three-foot sidewalk is not a right-of-way. A right-of-way generally runs ten to fifteen feet. And if it's not included specifically in an RFP.
Are you referring to a shared use path?
Yes, a shared use path, excuse me.
Yeah, the shared use, use path has not been defined within the document.
Why hasn't it? Because isn't that the whole idea behind this?
Because we want to give the consultant the flexibility to indicate to us what the possibilities are for the shared use path.
Wouldn't it be more clear if you gave them the specifics of what is wanted as far as specific bike?
Well, we don't know what's wanted yet because we have not had the public input meetings to determine the actual need. I mean, we would be jumping the gun by setting parameters when we're asking for a feasibility study.
So you had people do all of these, make plans, the people put all this information out, and it's not specific then?
The feasibility plan itself will tell us what would be possible to accomplish in the future.
So by not giving them that parameter and they come back and say, oh, yeah, we can do this, and then all of a sudden we say, So by not giving them that parameter and they come back and say, oh, yeah, we can do this. And then all of a sudden we say, well, we want a ten to fifteen foot area. And they come back and say, well, no, you didn't tell us that in the beginning. And what?
Well, they will hear that. That will be part of what they're going to hear from the community as they move through the process.
So originally, in the writing of this grant, Bisbee Bike Ways, I believe, were involved not only in the whole plan together nineteen months ago when it was started. Is there any reason why she's still not involved or the organization is still not involved?
In the RFP process?
In all of the process, technically.
Yeah, this is just the RFP.
Right, and.
So Bisbee Bike Ways has not been precluded from participating in the process.
They're precluded from the RFP, and why is that?
They did not indicate that they were going to be the writers of the RFP. And and I worked with the county and ADOT because ADOT is the organization that has the most controlling interest in the property. Right, so this is the RFP.
Yeah, I know what this is, but wouldn't it be useful to have someone who originally designed the whole idea involved in this, considering?
Not necessarily. This this is a doc not necessarily. It's a document that is essentially created for planning consultants and using organizations who have experience working with planning consultants. It's the best use of everyone's time and energy for this particular application.
Right, and every one of the organizations are more geared towards traffic and not necessarily human flow. So wouldn't it have been?
Just the RFP.
I get what it is. I know what it is.
Okay, we'll talk about human flow when we get when we have a consultant hired who will be developing the feasibility study.
So is then at that time, Bisbee Bike Way is going to be included since again?
The entire community will be included.
Right, but I'm saying in a more close fashion, since she did do the whole plan and do all the legwork to get the idea put forward. Nineteen months ago is when this this whole idea started. And Bisbee Bike Ways was the one that did all the legwork, going out and talking to people, getting blueprints drawn up, getting the whole idea meshed out with not much help from anyone else. And then she started.
That so that information is being that information will come out in the master plan. So the timing of the feasibility study is not perfect, but it's not a reason to not do it, especially since the grant money is available at this time. Ideally, the master plan would have been completed and the master plan would have informed participants of what the first priority for feasibility study would have been. But we had but there was an opportunity and it was taken and the city accepted the grant. And here we are putting out an RFP for a feasibility study. A lot of the information you're referring to will be reflected in the master plan, which is a separate planning document from this feasibility study.
So if it comes back that the consultant decides that a ten to fifteen foot wide shared path use isn't available, then what are we going to do with that?
Then we'll have to work. We'll have to work with ADOT.
Because a three-foot sidewalk isn't going to do anything.
It this is not asking for a three-foot sidewalk. It's asking for a feasibility study for a shared use path. Okay.
So when we if and when we get this consultant and we go to the master plan, as you call it.
No, the master plan is being developed by Christine McLaughlin at Cochise County Planning Department. And that was a commitment that the county and the city made to partner to pay the cost, the planning cost, to develop a master plan. That's happening completely independent of this feasibility study.
So is that master plan including all the work that was done by Bisbee Bike Ways?
If the the work done by Bisbee Bike Ways will be reflected in the master plan.
How so?
Because the information was provided to Christine and Christine will be able to incorporate the information into the master plan. It will be reflected in the master plan.
So I guess my big question is, is Bike Way is going to be included in that planning process, considering they she is the person that did all the legwork to get that information to supply the county?
To be included in the master plan process?
Right.
Yeah, she unfortunately, she removed herself from that process.
And you have that in writing?
I maybe could find her emails to that effect.
That would be nice.
Well, she certainly has them. She she could send you her emails in regards to her participation.
Well, since you're the one that stated it, I am asking it from you. I would appreciate it.
Well, we'll please put in a records request and Ashley and I will find out if they can recover those emails.
Was there any survey done before this in the process of?
Survey of what?
Or the desire or the need of us of the whole Bike Way, the whole pathway, so what we're writing the feasibility study for?
Well, unfortunately, we're doing this in the wrong kind of in the wrong order. So there was a survey done for the master planning document. Any any surveys to be done in the feasibility study would be conducted by the consultant.
So who wrote that survey that was done?
I did.
And based on what did you use the the plan that was written up or what did you use? For the information?
I used I used standard questions that other communities have used in their development of their bike plans.
So did you use any specific to the community and the whole idea behind it?
Did you see the survey that the library put out?
No, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, 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 you'll have to see the survey. I you know, it happened months ago. It's not online anymore. But we put in a records request. We can get you a copy of the survey.
Oh, but of course.
Okay.
I just have one last thing to say. I do think that it is not, how can I put this nicely? Not in the best of relationships to cut out people that have put in a great deal of effort for their community in building an idea that was embraced in the beginning, wholeheartedly by many people. And the design was to protect our citizens and our children and to give those people that maybe use bicycles a safer path. I just think that there should be thought process on including that person and organization that originally came up with this idea and provide them the sounding board for their ideas since it was them that did the legwork again, and it was their idea that patched this whole whole plan.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have a I have a request.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Of Ms. Coleman. I've listened carefully to all of this discussion and I'd like to point out one thing in the attachment to all of to the RFP. And there's no forgive me, there's no way I can cite it other than to say coordination with area economic development activities. It's on one of the second to the last pages.
Yeah, is that the reference to CEGO?
Well, no, there's a reference to seven entities that are all collaborators.
Yeah.
And my request is this, I would like you to add to two point one point two under coordination with ADOT, CEGO, Cochise County, Freeport-Mackinnon, and City of Bisbee. I would like you to insert after City of Bisbee, Bisbee Bike Ways and Sun Corridor Trail. The other two of the seven collaborators in this in this effort will be necessary, period. That's my request. Did I go too fast there, Ms. Coleman?
I'm sorry?
Did I go too fast or did you follow what I said?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That would that would be part of your motion, I believe.
I second it if it's motion.
Let's get the motion first.
Yeah, because all I'm asking is to insert them as.
That would have to be through motion, Mayor Protem.
Okay.
You would have to make a motion such as is stated with the amendment that you've just requested.
Okay, I move to approve the notice of solicitation for press professional consultant services shared use path feasibility study per USDA grant approval to include Bisbee Bike Ways and Sun Corridor Trail as collaborators in the in the RFP section two point one point two coordination with.
Do we have a second? Thank you, sir.
Second.
That was Ms. Giacamino?
Yes, it was.
Great, you're up now. You're on screen. Okay.
I was just too far away, sorry.
Okay. Ms. Cornetto?
Mayor Protem Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, possible and possible possible approval of a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussion and consultation with city attorney and city manager regarding acquisition of property. Do we have a motion?
I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion and consultation with city attorney and city manager regarding the acquisition of property for ARS thirty-eight dash four one four three one dot oh three A seven.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We are in executive session.
All right, we're going to end this session and you all should have links to the executive session in your inbox.
You have an email.
Okay.
So you close out this. Oh, wait.
Yeah, yes, you're going to close out this, then you're going to access your email and use the link.
Okay, I think.
Ready to go.
All right, we we've returned from executive session. Do we have a motion?
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
We have several seconds. Those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. We are exiled of executive session and we're going right into city managers' report. Ms. Coleman?
Thanks. I just wanted to do a little update on what's happening in the housing realm. So the first home is in the process of being renovated for our workforce housing program. We have met with the folks at Washington Federal. They're very excited to partner with us to provide the financing for borrowers. We'll be releasing some information to medical technicians, teachers, firefighters, and police officers to let them know to work with Washington Federal to be credit approved for housing. And we actually have a very good indication that anyone who's credit approved would not have to necessarily wait for a home that was being rehabbed. But we could work with them right away to identify a home and help them with down payment and closing cost assistance. So that's a very exciting layer on top of what we're currently trying to do in that realm. We hope to be hearing back on the two homes that have the Tefra liens on them and learned unfortunately it'll take a while to work through all of the liens on those properties and and obtain ownership. The folks that step up Bisbee Naco are already anxious for which house is going to be next, and I don't know what we're going to do. I am going to put in my city manager's column next week an appeal for folks who perhaps have properties. They don't know what to do with them, that they could donate those to the cities, the city to become part of this project or program. I was on a call with the Healthy Communities Committee last week and have a follow-up phone call with Trudy in regards to cohousing. So hopefully we'll see some activity there pretty quickly. We have not heard again from the folks with Compass Supportable Housing. Have you heard from them, Leslie?
No, I have not, but I can reach out to you if that would be helpful, Teresa.
Yeah, I yeah, that would be. Thank you. You know, we haven't heard otherwise. But we understand that they have us in line for grant cycle next April, so we're just waiting for that to move on. So I think that kind of covers where we are with some of the housing projects right now. And then on September eighth, there will be a work session to talk about Eastman's right-of-ways, et cetera. You know, I'm sure that you're aware that, you know, we find out we have sidewalks that we actually own as a parcel and sidewalks that belong to somebody who has a mining claim and lives in Chandler, and some are Phelps Dodge and some are no man's land, and we need to sort that all out. So our attorney will be working with us September eighth to talk through some of those challenges. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn with a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Higgins, as always. Thanks, everybody. It's good to see you all.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye.